We'll call the meeting to order and call your attention to the Open Meetings Act posted here in the council chambers. If you now, please join me in rising for a moment of silence and the Pledge of Allegiance. The Pledge of Allegiance?
... of the United States of America and to the Republic of which it stands, one nation of the ground and to the physical, the liberty of each justice.
Rule call, please.
Grantis?
Here.
Arms?
Here.
Webb?
Here.
McCarthy?
Here.
Muren?
Here.
Snorton?
Here.
Lawson?
Here.
Okay, with that, I would look for a motion to approve the consent agenda.
So moved.
Motion in second. If no discussion, please vote.
All council members present voting in affirmative, motion carries.
Would then entertain a motion to approve the full agenda.
So moved.
Motion second. If no discussion, please vote.
All council members present voting in affirmative, motion carries.
All right, that takes us to item number 12 on the council agenda under public hearings and related action. I will open this public hearing to consider a request from Robert A. Ecker, trustee of Richard Ecker Trust, to consider zoning change from A agricultural district to C1 local business district on property generally located a half mile west of South 37th Street and south of North Airport Road. And for some background on this, we'll hear first from Val Grimes, our city planner. Val?
Thank you. I've brought up the map here just to kind of show generally where this is. The east side of this red outline is 37th Street, and what we are talking about is essentially this northwest corner that you can kind of see where the pivot is not hitting right now. So it's not the whole zone change, it's just kind of that northwest corner that's about six to seven acres. The request is because you'll see if this zone change passes on all three readings, then there is a plat that goes with it to actually split off that six to seven acre corner there so that they can be two separate parcels. And the corner one that we're talking about is a zone change because it is currently ag and then it will be smaller than 40 acres. And they want to do storage and warehousing of non-hazardous products on there in the current buildings that are already on the piece of property. So it went through Planning Commission and Planning Commission suggested a C1 zoning, which is kind of the lowest that you could kind of go and still get a conditional use permit for storage and warehousing. And so if the zone change and the plat pass tonight, then we will have the conditional use permit on Planning Commission tomorrow morning. If the zone change does not, then we will pull the plat and we will also pull the cup the next morning. So that's kind of the history of the piece of property. And I know Planning Commission asked this. It's just right about there. It's just off from our current comp plan. And so this is North Airport Road. The blue is the airport. And then to the west is mixed commerce and industrial. And so it's just off to the west of where the commercial and the industrial already is. If there's any questions, and the applicant is here tonight.
Thank you, Val.
Val, is this for outdoor storage or large camper storage?
It was, it's all indoor storage. The conditional use permit actually says no outdoor storage. And as of right now, he is just asking for storage of the current buildings that are already on there. I believe two grain bins and a large shed is already on the property.
So no new construction on this parcel?
No.
Okay.
So, Val, on this map that you just put up, that gray area is zoned I1?
It's not zoned I1, but it's called for as industrial in the comp plan.
Okay.
Yes.
Let me say, was there a reason why they went C1 versus I1 so you didn't have to do a conditional use?
They originally asked for I1 instead of the commercial. And Planning Commission thought that rural residential was a little too close because there's that little, there's just this residential, our rural residential, just kind of catty corner to there.
Okay. Just to protect the area?
Correct.
Val, is what, is there currently not compliant with ag or what is motivating the zone change request?
It's mainly because they split, they want to split up the parcel. If they would have left it all in one piece, they could have just come in for a conditional use permit on ag. But because they are making that a much smaller parcel than the 40 acres and ag requirement, then we need to change the zoning to something more appropriate for that size.
Any other questions for Val?
Was there any opposition from the neighbors?
We had a couple of questions. The neighbor that owns this large parcel just to the west of them asked about it. I don't know that I would say it was an objection, but they came to Planning Commission and asked about it, and that's kind of how we came up with the outdoor storage and that sort of thing.
And how many total acres is it?
Six to seven on the plat, yeah.
Any other questions? This is a public hearing, so anyone wishing to comment can do so now. Okay, seeing and hearing no one, I'll ask for a Planning Commission report, please.
Norfolk Planning Commission held a public hearing on December 19th, 2023, at the request of Robert A. Ecker, trustee of Richard Ecker Trust, to consider a zoning change from A agricultural district to C1 local business district on property generally located one half mile west of South 37th Street and south of North Airport Road. Planning Commission recommends approval of the request with a seven to zero vote.
Thank you. Close the hearing and move to item number 13. Would entertain a motion to consider ordinance number 5864 approving zoning change from A to C1 on property generally located a half mile west of South 37th Street and south of North Airport Road.
I'll offer for consideration ordinance number 5864 approving a zoning change from agricultural to C1. Second.
Motion and a second. Any further discussion on this?
Can Ecker come up and tell us, can he come up and tell us what he wants to do with this, why he's asking for the change?
If you'd like to ask him to.
Yeah.
Yeah, Ecker, can you come up? I just don't understand. I thought it was new construction and then it's not.
Can you state your name for the record, please?
My name is Rob Ecker. I'm the trustee for the property in question. Like you said, I'm taking that parcel off of the quarter and I can't leave it as ag. It basically is going to stay the same use as it has been, although I use it for storage for the last 20 years. So I may clean a bunch of my stuff out and let somebody else park vehicles or something in there. The long-term plan is probably to go to R1 or rural residential at some point, but I can't do that, I don't think, without building within a short period of time. So I guess that's the long-term plan is at some point to turn it back to rural residential and build a house there.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions? Mr. Ecker, there's a form in front of you there if you wouldn't mind signing at the podium. Oh, did he? Oh, okay. If you are, you're done, you're good. Okay, thank you, thank you. Okay, anyone, any other questions or discussion, public input? All right, if not, short title, please.
In ordinance of the city of Norfolk, Madison County, Nebraska, amending the zoning district map of the city of Norfolk, Nebraska, providing when this ordinance shall be in full force and effect and providing for the publication of this ordinance in pamphlet form.
Please vote.
All council members present voting in affirmative, ordinance number 5864 carries on first reading.
Hearing no opposition to this, I had offered to suspend the rules and pass this ordinance on second and third.
Second.
Motion in second to suspend the rules and approve on second, third readings. If no further discussion, please vote.
All council members present voting in affirmative, ordinance number 5864 carries on second and third.
Item 14 would look for a motion to consider resolution number 2024-2 approving the final plat of Robert A. Ecker's addition.
I'll make a motion for consideration of resolution 2024-2 approving the final plat of Robert Ecker's addition.
Motion in second. Val, anything to add to this or any further discussion?
No, I just brought up the plat if they wanted to see it, just to show that it is just that northwest corner.
Very good, thank you. Any questions or discussion? Hearing none, please vote.
All council members present voting in affirmative, ordinance number, resolution number 2024-2 is adopted.
Okay, that takes us to our regular agenda and item number 15. I would entertain a motion to consider ordinance number 5865 amending section 2-5 of the Official City Code to update garbage and trash fees and include miscellaneous water service fees and public works equipment fees not previously listed in the fee schedule.
I'll make a motion for consideration of ordinance, ordinance number 5865 amending section 2.2-5 of the Official City Code.
Second.
Motion in second. For some background explanation on this, we'll hear from our Public Works Director, Steve Ramus. Steve?
Mayor and Council, as read, these are generally miscellaneous fees associated with solid waste, water, and some miscellaneous equipment for public works is being added. The solid waste changes are listed on pages 14 and 15 of the ordinance. Rob Huntley is here to answer any specific questions if they get too detailed. The water equipment miscellaneous charges are on pages 22 and 23. And Chad Roberts is here, Department Head for Water and Sewer Department. And then pages, the bottom of page 32 of the ordinance through this middle of page 35 of the ordinance are new fees related to miscellaneous public works equipment that's used. The, in general, we're making these adjustments to recapture something that's closer to the cost when we bill these things out. That's primarily what we're doing. We don't raise these fees necessarily every year. Some of them you'll see were 13, 14, last time they were raised. There are some cases there where we did raise them in '22. But again, we did take this to Subcommittee and had some, some conversation with Subcommittee back on November 13th. Subcommittee approved moving these forward to full council for consideration. Is there anything specific you'd like me to point out or discuss?
Anything for Steve on this or Rob?
I just, just kind of a question or comment here. On that 35 on those new charges, we're basically just trying to recoup the expenses that we're incurring right now, isn't that correct?
That's, that's correct. Many of these charges are related to street activity that we will, we will go perform and then through a permit, we bill back. The way the permit is currently structured, we're only recapturing about 50% of our cost on those when we have to open up a street for utility breaks or something like that. So this is going to allow us to recapture something much closer to 100% of our cost for, for the material and labor.
Any further questions? Any public input?
Jim McKenzie, I just have a question. All of these are new charges. I don't see that we removed any old charges. And I'm trying to understand the motivation, other than just capturing cost. I mean, there's things in there about a tractor with a bat wing mower and tractor with an alley drag. And obviously, there was some specific nature of those. Are we anticipating doing any additional work for somebody else that, why we're putting these fees in here? I'm just trying to understand why these fees are being put in here.
These fees will be used, we're going to be restructuring our permit as part of that. Currently, the permit, when you're doing a street break, allows for so much to be done for no cost, or we give you so many cubic yards of backfill or something like that. We also provide the equipment when we're doing those street breaks. So this is going to be, and as we've gone back and we've been looking at this for a couple of years, pretty consistently, the rates and stuff that are in there date back into the 90s. And so we're just not capturing a lot of our cost on those. I'm going to ask, I'd ask Will to come up and talk more about some of the specific things like the alley drag and how those fit into the ordinance.
Because there's items like, including a bat wing mower, there's a boom truck, there's a water truck, painter, all kinds of things that don't seem like they tie to a permit. So I'm just trying to understand why they're on there.
And that's correct, Jim. Will?
So this is just, what we did is just took the whole list of everything we have. So it's not always the residents. Some of that, the striking could be the contractor just requesting it if they can't get some out like this year on Benjamin or something. So right now, we have nothing anywhere that tells what that is. So we just took the list of all the equipment we have and just put it in there so if it gets called upon, we have something to fall back on is why we did it this way.
And that's not uncommon where, you know, our contractors end up in a pinch and they need us to do something and we go out there and perform it. And then we're, we do turn around and bill them, but there's really nothing in code that says, here's what we're going to bill them. So this, this is a way to codify the rates that we're sending out to either a contractor or homeowner if they're requesting something.
Makes sense. Thank you, Steve. Thank you, Will. Any other discussion? All right, hearing none. Short title, please.
In ordinance of the city of Norfolk, Nebraska, to amend section 2-5 of the Official City Code to update garbage and trash fees and include miscellaneous water service fees and public work equipment fees not previously listed in the schedule, to provide when this ordinance shall be in full force and effect and provide for the publication of this ordinance in pamphlet form.
Please vote.
All council members present voting in affirmative, ordinance number 5865 carries on first reading.
Seeing no opposition, I would ask that we suspend the rules of second and third in consideration of ordinance 5865.
I'll second that.
Motion in second to suspend the rules and approve on second, third readings. If no further discussion, please vote.
All council members present voting in affirmative, ordinance number 5865 carries on second and third.
Item 16 would entertain a motion to consider approval of an engineering consultant services contract with Olson Incorporated for the city of Norfolk Raze Planning Grant 2023 assistance for an amount not to exceed $4,450.
I'll make a motion for consideration of approval.
Second.
Motion in second. And for some background on this, we'll hear from Anna Allen, our Assistant City Engineer. Anna?
Good evening, Mayor and Council. So we would like to request approval for the engineering services consultant agreement with Olson and the city of Norfolk to provide technical assistance with the Raze Planning Grant application. This contract will allow Olson to assist the city in preparing a Raze Planning Grant application, and their scope of services would include assisting us with the project scope and preparing the budget request for the application, and then also reviewing our grant application. So for those who are not familiar, this, give you a little bit of background on the Raze Grant. The U.S. Department of Transportation is utilizing funds from the bipartisan infrastructure law, and they'll be awarding $1.5 billion annually over the next five years to successful applicants of this Raze Grant. The Raze stands for Rebuilding American Infrastructure with Sustainability and Equity. And so these grants are awarded on a competitive basis for planning or construct, constructing surface transportation infrastructure projects that will improve safety, environmental sustainability, quality of life, mobility, and community connectivity and economic competitiveness. So the city of Norfolk plans to submit an application for a planning grant for a multimodal transportation corridor through Norfolk. And then that, so our application with that planning grant, it would be to start the design and the plans for this transportation corridor and begin the environmental studies impact and start some community engagement on the project. So this would just kind of be the, the first part of, of the overall project. So we're hoping if we can get the application and get awarded the, the grant to start this project, then the next step would be applying for a capital grant. So there are quite a few documents required for this application. The city of Norfolk, city staff will be working on most of these application documents. So there's project description, project location maps, merit criteria, narrative, project readiness documents, letters of support. So when, in working with Olson, we would mainly rely on them for the budget portion of this application. So Olson and Associates has extensive experience in writing grant applications such as this Raze Grant and other infrastructure grants. So we look forward to working with them to complete this application. I'll answer any questions you guys have. So this application is due February 28th of 2024, and they expect to award in June of this year. So we are working very quickly to get all of the information and, and everything put together, but we've already kind of got a good start on things as far as starting to get information put together for the narrative and things like that.
You also mentioned a corridor where this could be used. Do you actually have anything in common?
Yes, we do. So our transportation corridor would be a multimodal transportation corridor. So our overall vision would be to provide a multimodal trail from the south side of Norfolk, from the trailhead of the Cowboy Trail, going up north, following along First Street. I mean, this, our routes are not exact right now, but will be figured out in the planning stages. But essentially, taking a trail from the trailhead of the Cowboy Trail, going north, and then connecting up through that area of South Norfolk, that northwestern avenue, and, and then getting the trail across Highway 275 and following 7th Street up to, you know, towards the center of town, continuing that up Queen City Boulevard, and then going west, maybe along Georgia, somewhere along there, and connecting over to Skyview Lake. So it would serve as a kind of a backbone of, you know, a trail system throughout town, and that would connect, you know, everybody through town. One, for people who might not have vehicles right now that are trying to get jobs and having trouble getting, you know, having a good, safe spot to be able to travel to work. The other issues that we have right now, too, is, you know, having, we don't really have a safe crossing across Highway 275, you know, for pedestrians and bike riders. So to provide a crossing, a safe crossing across Highway 275, and again, across Highway 81. So whether those, Highway 275 may be an at-grade crossing with some additional safety measures there, and also looking at maybe a grade-separated crossing at Highway 81 to get people under Highway 81.
And that's exactly what these grants are used for, is that type of construction, right?
Correct.
It's not like you can use these grants for other items.
So these grants, I mean, they really focus on improving safety, you know, environmental sustainability, quality of life, that, that type of thing, and then connecting communities. So that's the other part that I feel like we kind of have the advantage in this grant application is just because of where we're kind of bisected with the Highway 81, Highway 275. You know, we have a disconnection between north part of Norfolk and south part of Norfolk and east and west. So putting that together, and then we, it also focuses on areas that have historically disadvantaged census tracts. And we do have two of those census tracts here in town, and that corridor would be going right through those historical disadvantaged census tracts. So this is, we believe this is a project that would fit in with their criteria.
Thank you.
Anna, I'll just say what I like about this is, first, the creativity of staff in identifying a potential source of funding to, to do this kind of work. Secondly, doing, as you just said, making trail connections, essential trail connections in currently underserved parts of the community. And third, opening up access from the core of our community to the Cowboy Trail head. And that's, that's a big thing in itself, given the significance of that trail in the, in the region, and I think even some tourism opportunities that exist for the community and that. So, and I know there's other things that can be considered within this Raze Grant. As you said, they're, they're allotted on a competitive basis. I think we have a worth, a very worthwhile project to put into consideration here, and I appreciate staff's planning and planning ahead to make us eligible for this. I want to emphasize, too, that at this stage, this is a planning grant, not a, not a construction or capital grant. So, and as we've heard from various agencies involved with this, that I think increases our potential for success in the first, having put in a planning grant before going straight to the construction grant.
Correct, yes. The DOT, the U.S. DOT would really like to make sure that whoever is, you know, putting in for a capital grant, you know, to start construction, that they've already identified, you know, environmental issues or, you know, whatever might come up in that construction. So in doing this planning grant, you kind of get all of those issues worked out beforehand. And that way, the DOT knows that this is really a good eligible project that, you know, won't have many, you know, unidentified issues.
And I would note, we did, as part of the consent agenda, authorize making application. This would enlist the help of Olson to complete the application itself. Correct?
Yes.
All right, any further discussion or questions on this? Thank you. Any public input? All right, hearing and seeing none, please vote.
All council members present voting in affirmative, motion carries.
Item 17 would look for a motion to consider approval to award a bid to One Neck IT Solutions for the replacement of IT battery backups and power distribution units in the amount of $56,612.17.
I'll make a motion for consideration of approval.
Second.
Okay, motion in second. For some background on this, we'll hear from Brad Anderson, our Information Technology Director. Brad?
Good evening, Mayor and Council. This request is to replace the battery backups for our city network locations. Currently, they're varying ages, sizes, most of them are well past their, their replacement, recommended replacement. Another big thing with the current ones is we are not able to proactively monitor those, which has kind of led to some issues where if batteries need replaced, or the temperature in the room's too hot, or they do go on battery, we have no idea unless somebody tells us. And that's kind of led to a few outages in certain locations when that could... Um, and that's kind of led to a few outages in certain locations, uh, when that could easily be prevented. Um, you'll see on the bid tab, we did request bids for both lead acid batteries and lithium ion batteries. Um, the lithium ion are obviously more expensive. But with that, you get a seven to ten-year life cycle out of them. With the lead acid, it's roughly three to five years. Um, and to replace those batteries, the, the lead acid batteries, um, it's about three to four hundred dollars per, per unit. Um, so looking at that, we're estimating between seventy-five hundred to nine thousand, ten thousand dollars. Uh, we have to do three to five years into that life cycle, um, plus staff time to do that. So the request is to go with the lithium, um, that gets us the most life and the least amount of time we have to touch those devices. So, any questions?
Sure. Question, it says lithium, uh, check in there and then it has lithium CC. What, what is the difference there?
Um, on the bid tab, we did offer, um, a couple of different options. So if, if we were to pay, pay, pay with these by check or credit card, yeah.
Any other questions for Brett?
And you're wanting to go with one check, you're saying here?
Yeah.
How come it doesn't have a delivery schedule for it?
Um, that is missing on the bid tab, but I think on their, on their bid, most of their, their units are in stock. So they're expecting four to seven days. Um, there's a couple of them that have a two to four week lead time, so.
All right. Anything else? Thank you, Brett. Any public input on this? Any further discussion? If none, please vote.
All council members present voting in the affirmative. Motion carries.
That concludes this meeting of the Norfolk City Council. We are adjourned. Happy New Year.